Thank you. I will take a minute to just provide notice of an executive session where we discussed legal matters, and we will get started with public participation. So this is an opportunity to come to the mic, speak about any issue you'd like, whether it's on or off the agenda. Residents only, five-minute limit, and I invite anyone up to speak on any issue.
Hi, my name is Sabrina, and I am here to follow up or find out if-
I'm sorry, can you give your full name and address, please?
Sabrina Valente, address 125 Radnor Avenue, Villanova, PA 19085. So I am here to follow up or find out if you plan on having, if you plan on addressing the school bus stop-arm violation cameras in a future agenda.
Our public comment period is not a back-and-forth, so if you're here to address it, would love to hear your thoughts on it. At this time, it is not on the agenda tonight, but at public comment period or old and new business, we can bring up issues that are not on the agenda. But tonight, it's not up for a vote, but glad to hear your thoughts on it. Is there any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Brian Fisher. I live at 51 Wentworth Lane in Bryn Mawr, which is the Garrett Hill neighborhood. I just wanted to address ordinance 2023-32. It was brought up last meeting. It was parking prohibited at all times on the west side of Wentworth Lane. I just wanted to address that because it was said that the neighborhood was notified and that it was discussed, and that the, there was support of the neighbors. I tried to get to the bottom of it a little bit because I wasn't personally notified, and I talked to some of my neighbors just next to me, and they said they weren't notified. So then I went to all of the neighbors on the street with the help of Lynn Hocker-Smith, and nobody was notified, and the meeting did not take place. So I think it was just a miscommunication because there was a meeting that had taken place earlier this year in the summer, in August, to address business parking in the Garrett Hill neighborhoods, but it did not address street parking at all. So there, we took a petition, we got all the signatures. I have a map that has all the houses that are rejecting the ordinance. There's only two houses that did not sign to reject. Leave it what you will, I guess. There's, I was a firefighter for eight years. I served with Flanagan. Might be off on the amount of years, maybe it was five. But one thing I do agree is that, you know, emergency vehicles and municipal vehicles need access to the street. I think a solution can be found, but I think we just want to be involved in that discussion, that process, so that's my point, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will, we will accept the petition, not for me. You could give it to Chris Flanagan, our police chief, that would be great.
Good evening. My name is Samuel Horsey. I live at 52 Wentworth Lane. We have a slight problem about parking. We have people from Summit Terrace coming down who has two and three cars, and they're coming down on Wentworth and taking up parking spaces. And then the trash truck has problems getting through at times, and other trucks like UPS or FedEx, they have problems getting through. Personally, I have a problem getting in and out of my driveway because they are parking directly in front of my driveway. I can't make a right going out of my driveway, so I have to go to my left at all time, go up to Garrett Ave-, I mean, up to Conestoga Road. I've been in the community ever since 1986. I'm a retired military person. I worked 31 years in the post office, and I think that I shouldn't have to be going through this. So I'm concerned about the parking being taken away from the residents on our street, on Wentworth, because I was told it might be, it might make it a one-way street. I was told that it's going to be parking only on one side. We, we have families of children on both sides. So if you put parking on one side, kids on the other side may run into the street. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Hocker-Smith. I'm at 49 Wentworth. Not to rehash everything, I just want to reiterate, I've been a third generation in this house. My grandfather was the original builder. As long as I've been in this home, which is 50 years, it's been a private road. So I understand the situation and would love to rectify it, but I think it should be done jointly with the neighbors involved. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, excuse me, I have to talk here. Hello, my name is Cheryl Tamola. I live on Midland Avenue in the third ward, and I'm here to thank you. Amazing, huh? When I was on the planning commission back in the 90s, the property at, that is now called the West Wayne Preserve, was denied its supposed rights to be developed to 20 townhomes. We denied it. The owner sued us, sued the township, even though the Delaware County Planning Commission agreed with us. And it went to court. We lost, and the township then chose to buy the property. It was a very good idea, and at the time, because at the time, we all knew that it acted as a serious stormwater detention basin. And for many years, the project floundered between putting cement basins in there, or letting it go, or contaminated soil, or whatever. So later on, in 20, I guess it was 14, I was the chair of this group, the Radnor Greenways and Open Space Network Plan. I made sure it got in there. And so there's a page here that addresses the fact that this should be turned into a retention basin and a walkway with, for the ability to study, for everybody to study the natural features there and the natural habitat. And so I am delighted that you have applied for, and I hope will receive, is that, it's not certain yet, right? This grant, because it's a job that really should have been done a long time ago, but better late than never. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? I appreciate all of you coming out. I will move to our consent agenda. Is there any comment from the public on any item on our consent agenda, items 2A through E? And is there any item on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to take off and speak to?
I'd just like more information on E. It's a pretty sizable grant. I'm just curious where some of that money's going to go to. I'm going to have an idea of some of those trees, then-
Before you get into the, let me just make sure that's the only item. Is there any other item that we'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Okay, not hearing any.
Yeah.
Sure, set it up.
Who's that to, Bill, or?
I could help you, Commissioner.
Oh, Steve, yeah.
So the, as it's noted in there, and first, we have to thank Melissa Kahn. As Bob Tate and I spoke today, she is the monarchy of all grants in the township. So we're requesting to apply for a $500,000 grant for the West Wayne Preserve Stormwater Management Project. We call it a flood reduction project. We've already received $480,000 in a growing greener grant for this project. So this project is actually twofold. Part of it is to shape the West Wayne Preserve, to retain some water, but also probably the teeth of the project are over in Friends of the Radnor Trail Park, where there will be a subsurface stormwater management system, porous paving, and stormwater management of the parking lot. Been filling in Commissioner Abel since this is in his ward. I'll be appearing before the Shade Tree Commission at their next meeting, I believe on the 22nd, to step through what we're looking to do, and touch base with Park and Rec at their following meeting, and then come to this board to go to bid for the project. So it's all for that project.
Just, thanks. And yeah, if we can get a half-million-dollar grant, kudos to staff, Bill, and everyone that's, that's involved. So it's a $500,000 grant. You said we've gotten 480. And that's, so is this, we're trying to get another 20,000, or would this be 980?
Well, we want to get another 500,000. This is, this is a multimillion-dollar project, right? So it's like a two-and-a-half-million-dollar project. So if, if we were successful, we'd have $980,000-
Okay.
-for this project, which frees up money for other stormwater-
So it's five plus another five, hopefully.
Correct. The 480 is in hand, you know, that grant has been approved.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good job, everyone.
Madam President, if I could just add quickly to that, I just, this circles back on when we gave the stormwater presentation and funding plan that the board approved last year. Part of the commitment was continuously looking for grants to help offset the cost of any of those projects, because as Mr. Sinney pointed out, you know, every grant we get is a dollar more for projects that currently don't have funding. And as we're aware, the stormwater funding list is rather extensive. So this is something that, you know, hopefully we are awarded the grant, but something that we'll continue to stay on top of, thanks to Melissa's efforts mostly.
Thank you very much. Great news, and really quite hopeful for a successful application. Seeing no other comment on that issue, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
A second.
And all in favor say aye. That passes, and now we will, I'll ask for, on the remainder of the consent agenda items A through D, may I hear a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And all in favor say aye. Okay, moving on to our business agenda. The first item is Resolution 2023-26, which is final land development approval on the St. Honoré 14-lot subdivision at Eagle Road and Stratford Road. Do we have somebody here to present? Mr. Norcini, do you want to lead us in?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So the developer, Kaz Holloway and his team are here. They were before you for caucus, so this is their last step in front of this board if, if they get approval. Any waivers or requirements they have will be addressed in the developers' agreement drawn up by Solicitor Rice. So if they do get approval tonight, their last step would be to get DEP approval for sewer. They won't be back to you for that. It would just sit until that approval comes, and then the developer would be able to get, move forth. So last week was kind of Q and A. I don't know if Mr. Holloway wants to present anything, or-
I'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, Kaz Holloway. I'm here. I'll answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions from the board? We have been walked through this. We haven't missed in one. I don't think we have questions for you. Do you want one final, one final pitch before I call the vote? Ready to go. Okay, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-26.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, you have six votes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. This will take us to Resolution 2023-27, which is preliminary slash final land development approval, Oak Hill mixed-use development at 1,001 Eagle Road. Mr. Norcini?
So Mr. Greg Lingo, the developer, is here with a much larger team than Mr. Holloway had. And so same situation as last week. Last week was caucus, Q and A. They are looking for your final approval tonight. Solicitor Rice will create a developers' agreement with any of the waivers that they required and any other requirements of the subdivision. As I noted last week, they're requesting preliminary final, as opposed to going through those steps. I feel, staff feels that that request is warranted. They've gone through planning commission and have been vetted through all our reviews. So with that, I would leave it to Mr. Lingo. Oh, I'm sorry, and they too have to wait for their sewer approval. The project will sit until that time comes.
Hello, Greg. Greg Lingo, representing my company, Rockwell, Rockwell Radnor LLC. Hoping to answer any questions that you have, but we're really excited about the project.
I will open it up for questions from commissioners. Any last words before I call the vote?
Nope.
Okay. I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a six-person vote with Sean Farhi off the dais. Okay, this is exciting. We're at a presentation from Willow's Park Preserve. This is the biannual report regarding progress of fundraising efforts and construction. I invite Will Nord and some of your board members to tell us how it's going at the Willows.
I don't know if we have any slides. We had, we had slides, where we have slides. Oh, cool.
I was in Dennis.
Like a week ago, or on Monday.
We double check.
Okay, I can, I, I can-
Are we having some, some tech difficulties?
Some really intriguing slides. This, he's going to try to dig them up. My little short intro doesn't necessarily need the slides. I think when Ms. Hickson, our treasurer, presents, they might be a nice visual. I believe they're all, they're, they were all sent to you, so there, there's nothing different.
Yeah, I would really love to have the slides going during your presentation. We all as, yeah, we as commissioners have them on our, in our board materials, but I don't think that they were printed. I'm trying to stall a little bit here.
Okay.
Build a little tie.
Can I bring them up?
I think they're embedded as PDFs in the agenda. We just pull it up.
Okay.
Okay.
Fortunately, the prior items on our agenda did not take very long, so I think we've got a little time to, let's get this right.
There, voila. Yep. Is that in presentation, though? Give me one minute, I'll have it up on the screen.
Like magic. So are you able to advance through from where you are?
Yeah, I think we just, just use the, just use the mouse to bring it down. Okay, thank you for your patience. Good evening.
Of course, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Will Nord. I'm the executive director at the Willow's Park Preserve. We're always excited and extremely grateful for your time and to be able to present twice a year to you all, to give you updates and highlights and tell you what's going on over at the Willow's Park Preserve. We look back at 2022, and we're really optimistic and excited about what went on. I think last year as a whole really showed us what is possible if the Willow's Mansion is restored for community use. We keep, we keep talking about the progress. We keep talking about the momentum that's building with our young nonprofit. You know, we hosted hundreds, if not thousands, of community members throughout 2022. They all, you know, joined us at the Willow's for various events and programs, from retreats and music concerts and camps, holiday events, meetings, celebrations, health and wellness programs, and more. Reopening the doors at the mansion has allowed us to create the community connections that are so meaningful to all of us. That's our, you know, the kind of the tagline we've been using in our, in our monthly newsletter. Very important to us. Definitely a, a big purpose of reopening the Willow's Mansion is to create community connections. In addition to the, in addition to the community connections, the programs and events that we've hosted over the last six months, year, we're also making progress in, on the restoration and improvements to the Willow's Mansion. Just some highlights before I turn it over to Krista Hickson, our treasurer. We did receive confirmation in the last few weeks from Senator Amanda Capaletti's office that we are receiving Keystone Communities Program Grant in the amount of $89,500. So we're super excited about that, and that grant will go towards the, the renovation of our, of our kitchen at the mansion. In addition to that, we're excited to say that the final installation to the security system has been installed, so there's an alarm system and cameras that we installed in partnership with, with the township. We have already booked 22 private events for this calendar year, 2023. That is with our, with our catering partner, Peachtree Catering. Ms. Hickson will go back, get, get more, I think, maybe involved with that, but that is a big part of our sustainability, is hosting up to 25 private events to help cover operations for, for the year. And then finally, another great highlight, I think most of you might know, but we, the township is celebrating the 50th anniversary of you all purchasing the property. So I've really enjoyed working with Tammy Cohen over the last few weeks, and we're planning a, a nice 50th anniversary celebration on July 22nd at the, at the Willow's Mansion. So more plans will come, but that's going to be a big highlight of the summer. So we look forward to that. I'm going to turn it over to Krista Hickson, our treasurer, to show you some financials. There's some pictures for you all to see, too. All right, you good? Just to use that cursor to pull it down.
Okay. Thanks. Hi, and thank you for the time. The next couple charts are a summary of our, high-level summary of our financials for 2022, and also a comparison with the prior year. I thought it was important to do a quick level set on some terminology, as some of you have been involved in nonprofit, you already know this, but generally, expenses and revenue are functionally allocated to one of three buckets: program, fundraising, or management in general. And certain expenses, like Will's salary, for example, are allocated across those different buckets, because Will spends his time on, in all of those spaces. And then program actually means something very specific. It's the set of activities that we do to support our mission. So we have actually defined two programs, and we report on these. One is the renovation, restoration, and maintenance of the mansion, and the other is public programming, events, and mansion usage. So both public and private usage of the mansion. Okay, I'm bailing already. I, I'm a Mac person, so I'm totally lost on Windows.
Yes, I know. Just go on the side here, and bring it down to the next page.
Okay, don't go far.
Everything's on the other side.
Okay, so this is just some high-level numbers pulled from our income statement. Though contributions in 2022 were over 140,000. They were down from 2021, and that can be explained almost entirely by the contribution of one large donor who gave us a large check in 2021 and told us at the time, "I won't be able to do this again in 2022." And that's not atypical of nonprofits. Donations fluctuate from year to year, and it's why we've always had a strategy of diversifying our sources of income. And therein lies what I think has been a key to our success, is program revenue. And program revenue, as I said, includes mansion usage. So we increased program revenue to, you know, over 200%. In 2021, it was over 30,000. In 2022, over 100,000 in program revenue. So that's a number of things. That's mansion usage, that's private events, that's the commission from our caterer, that's tickets to public events. A lot of our public events, we offer at no charge. Some have a nominal fee. And then fundraising event, that, that really is our fall fundraiser. Sorry. That's our fall fundraiser, that third item there. Other includes interest, dividend, income. In 2021, the large number, $12,478, was the PPP loan. That included the PPP loan that was forgiven, so it's recorded as revenue. And then deferred revenue, so these are, this number is not on the income statement. Deferred revenue, that's largely deposits that we collect for future events. We don't include that on our income statement until the event happens. At that time, we can recognize the revenue. Any questions before I move on to the expenses? Okay. Well, the expenses are another opportunity to thank this body for approving the funds needed to implement the fire suppression system and alarm system. That was a game-changer for us, for sure. So our program expenses increased, as you would expect, in 2022. It costs money to support the programs that we do, and also ensure a good client experience for those wanting to have private events at the mansion as well. Renovation, restoration, maintenance, that number includes capital amateurization expenses. They're listed on there. I don't know that that's a complete list, but it includes the roof restoration, which we're still amortizing. The sprinkler and fire suppression system, the actual expense was, and we came in under budget for that, we, it was $173,000. And then kitchen upgrades, we did some kitchen upgrades, but as Will mentioned, we want to focus on a kitchen, complete kitchen renovation going forward, and we renovated the first four bathrooms. So those are all included in our amortized expenses. So net income was up compared to 2021. So I'm going to just pause there for some questions.
Sure. I just have, I'm going to start with the questions, if you all don't mind. Just a quick, so that I understand, contributions versus fundraising. So you do have an asterisk here that there were 161 transactions. So are those, every, does that include just pure donations, or is that tickets to events?
That's, that's all donations. That does not include tickets to events. So tickets to the public events, like our concerts, and like I said, most of our events, or quite a few of our events, we, we don't charge anything. The, some of the concerts, we charged a nominal fee so that we could pay the musician costs. That, that's in there. There was an event that we did in partnership with Chanticleer and Ardrosen, and that was a tour of all three properties with a breakfast and a lunch, and we, we did charge for those tickets. But the fall fundraiser ticket purchases, you would see that revenue under fundraising event, the third item.
So then, I, I heard you say that there, in '21, there was a significant contribution that was a one-time gift. Do you think that your individual- Do you think that your individual donations are in, on the increase in, in the number of transactions? Are you seeing more donations? You just didn't do a comparison.
Yeah.
So you have 161 this year, but I don't need numbers, but just are you seeing that number rise?
In terms of the number of individuals donating, yes. You know, but donations range from $10 to 50,000. So they, they run the gamut.
Thanks. That's all my questions. I'll open it up to others. Commissioner Farhi?
Yeah, thanks. So if you go back to the, the revenues, it says, it said that what the township payment is for what? That 173 is for what?
I'm sorry.
Is that just a donation to the, or is that?
No, that was the funding resolution that was approved to fund the sprinkler and fire suppression system. And what, it was approved up to 200,000, and we came in under budget on the project.
Okay. I mean, that, I don't know if that would qualify as, as income?
It is. It does. According to accounting, it does.
Okay.
But I did separate it out because I wanted you to be able to clearly see the impact that that had versus normal fundraising and other operations.
Okay, and what were the total expenses? Just curious.
That was the next chart.
And I do have questions. I'm just trying to.
That's okay.
Find them here.
Yep.
So the expenses were 292?
Mm-hmm.
So if you strip out that 173?
Well, you don't strip out the 173 because it's a capitalized expense. So I think the last time I presented cash flow numbers, you were looking for more of an apples-to-apples, year-to-year comparison. So this is an income, you know, this is accrual accounting. So the 173 is capitalized. So to get, if, you know, to be clear, the capitalized expenditures, if you want to get to more of a cash flow view.
Okay, I, I guess my concern is that you're, you're counting that as income. And I don't know how that, so while that's good for the mansion, how is that, if you strip that out, how is that going to make this venture flourish or become more? I don't view that as income. I view income as a, as a contribution, as income. And, you know, if you have a fundraiser and you, you know, you have events, that's one thing. But that goes specifically towards something. So it's kind of like a, you know, it's kind of like a, it balances out. So when it comes to your contributions and your events, if you strip that out and you strip out what that cost is, what is the, so it's 292? And then, and I'm sorry, what's your income again? Go back to your income. So what's 431?
Well, there's.
431 minus 173, sorry, is 252. So the real income, I'm sorry, go back to the expenses again.
But you'd have to strip out.
Okay, so.
You'd have to strip out the exact same amount that they brought, put in income. You'd have to take it out of expenses. If you're crossing it out at income, they used the money of 173 and change that the township gave them based on our agreement. And they counted it as income, but it's also embedded that exact same amount in expenses. So it doesn't alter the differential between.
All I'm saying is that it just seems like a very narrow window and a very narrow amount to keep the funding going to do, which is, my understanding is the mission is to restore the house. So if there's 20,000, 30,000, or even 50,000 or 75,000, how, how are you gonna get from, from A there to B? And I, I get the whole COVID thing, and I know it's not easy. I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just, you know, looking at what the mission is. The mission of this board is not a fire suppression system. It's part of the, it's fundraising, it's events. It's, you know, getting enough to where you can have, you know, basically like a trust fund or whatever you want to call it set up. So that's kind of my, my concern. You can call it income. The accounting may say that it's income. That's fine. But to me, that income is what you guys and what your mission is to bring in. It's not what the township is telling you to do, what the township is giving you for a fire suppression system or a sprinkler. I mean, revenue is revenue. I don't know if that would. Ken, I'm sorry, Ken Frohlock? Are you CPA? Okay, all right. But that's, 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 that's my, that's my big issue of how it's accounted for. And I, to me, it just, you may tell me that is, I just, from my business standpoint, I don't know if you can say that's. Maybe it is income, but I, I don't know if that should be on that.
Well, so there's a lot of questions in there. Let me try to address them. I mean, one, I wanted to go back because you asked a question about the capitalization of our expenses. So the expense numbers include for 2022, $49,000 of capitalized expenses. So if you were looking for the cash flow view, you'd back that out, and then you'd add in the 173 that we spent on the sprinkler and the fire suppression system. In terms of what's income for financial reporting, I don't decide that. We don't decide that. Our accountants, our third-party auditor decides what that is. But I do think, and I think this is really more to your point, Sean, about sustainability. And that, you know, how do we ensure that we, we survive? Because every time I take a deposit for a wedding in 2024, I think about us being there for that bride and that groom that had other options and, and chose the Willows. When somebody gives me a donation check, whether it's $50 or $10,000, I think about how they would feel if they read that, you know, two months from now, we were, we're belly up. So I take it very personally, and I think a lot about our sustainability. That's why the partnership with a caterer like Peachtree was really important, being able to get these events. We had, I, I think 2022 shows that we are successful in that diversification strategy. If you look at the increase, it's mostly due to the private events. And, and that's recognized revenue. So that's not deposits or cash we took in for a future event. That's recognized revenue. And if I think about just, and this is very, very big picture, the way I think about our budget, you know, what is our sustainability goals? I think we need to achieve, you know, our lights-on expenses are probably, you know, between 160 and 180. Doesn't necessarily represent where we want to be, because I'd love to have the Willows open, you know, seven days a week for, you know, coffee and snacks, you know, all day. Come by after you finish hiking. So it doesn't necessarily represent where we need to be, but that, that's generally our expenses. So if we are successful, and, and we will be successful, we've already booked 23 private events this year. The income that I expect we'll get from private events is around 160,000. Donations, I expect, will be, you know, over, I hope will be over 100,000. You know, hopefully more than that. But that gets us to where, you know, we can cover the lights-on expenses. We can do, you know, the bare minimum of, of projects we need to do. But we're always hoping for the, the donor that's willing to step up to fund a major project. So we, we certainly, we have more projects than we have funds that we want to do. And I cannot, you know, I can't predict when that'll happen, if that'll happen. I didn't predict that we would get a grant of $89,000 to do a kitchen renovation. But we're always, you know, it's pedal to the metal on off-fronts to try to raise the funds.
I'm not trying to, I mean, the Willows is a treasure. I appreciate everything that you do, that Howard does, that Will does. That's not the issue. My issue is that, like, I want to see it not just survive. And I get COVID is tough. I want to see it thrive. And $200,000 or $300,000 a year in income, that's great. But how do you, but that's just, like you said, keeping the lights on. And even though you do get great catering and you get good gigs and like, I get it. But, you know, what is that, you know, what are those, you know, the, the projects that are up front that need to be done now or yesterday, as well as, you know, what's on the back burner? I don't know if you have a number, but that is 3, 4, 5 million, and that's probably moved from 2020 with supply chain issues. It's probably gone up. I just, you know, you know, I just don't want the township to be on the hook to show good money after bad, "You guys working really hard, and hey, look, it's not working." So, I mean, I want to help you, like, as much as you can. Again, I've invited you guys to come to the Parks Board on another issue, like, hey, let's talk about dogs at the, the Willows and stuff. So it's not that I don't appreciate it. I just don't want to be here six months from now or a year from now, and, and that's it. But those are my questions. Those were my concerns, and it's, and I do appreciate everything. It's just, you know, I'm just, you know, worried that once there's a problem, then it's, it's too late. And I'm not, you know, it's not like it's a Silicon Valley Bank situation. I'm teasing. But I'm just saying, but like, I don't want it, that you're, it's too, you know, like, what can we do as a board and as a community to really get you, you know, is it donate? Like, I guess the big thing is you're not going to pay that stuff with, you know, the, the events will keep the lights on, but you need those donations. Is that, is that?
We need the donations. Absolutely. We, we can't survive without the donations.
Okay, all right. I mean, that, that was my, my comment.
So I think just, just to add and kind of finish it up, this, this year is really important for us, right? So 2023, it's going to be the first year that, it's going to be the first year that we'll most likely have 25 catered events through Peachtree, right? Last year, we had, I think it was 12, 11 or 12. No more than 15, right? And so we're going to get to our max of 25 this year. And so that plan, part of kind of that business plan, will come to fruition. So it's going to be a really important year to look at those numbers. And to your point, Sean, to see, all right, we, we've hired, you know, built this relationship with our caterer on purpose to help as cover as much operations as possible. And if that comes to fruition and operations are, are pretty much covered, then all those other donations, then we can put to capital, and then we can put to programming. So I think this year will be really interesting to take a look at those, at those numbers.
Hey, I just want to say congratulations on that grant. And also, I clearly see the steady growth year over year. I mean, we, we only have, you know, a year to compare, but obviously, you're already booked for 2023 for all those events, and I just think that that's amazing. There is steady growth there. And just keep doing what you're doing, and, you know, I think we are here to support.
Well, it's definitely been a crawl, walk, and hopefully we, we start running. But we take your support, you know, to heart. And especially, I, I was happy. I also lost a little sleep after the approval of the funding resolution for the sprinklers because, like I said, every dollar that comes in from the small donations to the large grants, I feel a responsibility that, that we're here, and that's our intent.
And also, I think the more people that come to experience the Willows, that helps you grow your donations. You know, like, like people experience it, they are like, wow, I really want to support this. So the fact that you have more people walking through the doors is increasing your chance of donations.
Yeah, and if anybody hasn't, you know, Sean, been over there recently, come, come by and, and see what we've done. Because I continue to get comments like that, people that haven't been there for a while. You know, another passion of mine is I'm a birder, so I've done several talks at the Willows, and I had one this past Saturday, and someone was there that I gave a tour of the mansion that hadn't been there in probably, you know, decades, but had a wedding there. You know, had a daughter that had a wedding there and was amazed at, at what they saw. So again, I invite all of you, if you haven't been by recently, to come.
Thank you. Commissioner Rowley?
Yeah, my comment, I think you guys are doing a great job. You guys are also doing it in the correct order. Like, you restored the roof first, then the sprinkler system. And it's not like you're gonna have to do that every year. And your, your programming, now you're making money because you're allowing the inside things to happen and more to happen there. So your revenue is going to grow, and I just think you guys are doing a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just, just a few questions. So when we voted on the lease in 2019, there, there was a, a vision, a plan. I know you guys weren't part of the WPP at the time, but that's what this board voted on, that final end state. You know, full transparency, I voted against that lease, but, you know, that, that ship has sailed. What, now that you guys are running the program, what is your end state? What does that building look like, and what's the timeframe?
So I think we, at, at the last commissioners' meeting, we addressed the legalese of the lease obligations for phase one, phase two. So we are not legally obligated to achieve the vision that was in the, you know, the renderings that you saw. We would all love it. It, it's simply based on funds. And to answer your question very specifically, I need almost a crystal ball to see who's going to donate what when. And I don't have that, so we have had to focus on priorities, like making sure the building is safe and we can preserve, you know, that the fire alarm is, fire suppression system was obviously critical. The video monitoring and implementation of the security system is critical, the roof. So we are trying to do the, the blocking and tackling the things that are needed to make sure that we can preserve and then continue the, the restoration. So we have a long list of projects. We are going through a strategic planning process right now. And Will, with the help of consultants, we're doing some focus groups. And we were actually really gratified to see the number of community, community members that responded that wanted to be a part of our focus group sessions, to actually chart that course. You know, what does the future look like? And your specific question is what does the building look like? But, you know, that's kind of part and parcel of, you know, what does the community want, and, and how do we provide that?
So there is no, you have no description of what an end state looks like?
I'm not going to say that we're deviating from the plans that were put in place. I just can't tell you what timeframe they're achievable. You know, we, I mean, yeah, the, the renderings were, were beautiful. We would love to do that. We would love to get to, we've made a lot of progress on the first floor. We'd love to get to the second. There's, there are some deviations that were more intentional, like, for example, the Solarium, because we got a lot of the original plans called for eliminating the Solarium. We got a lot of feedback that said, "We like the Solarium. We have memories, you know, in that Solarium." So it's not a deviation per se. I, I would say if there was a, you know, the shiny object on the hill, it's still the, the renderings. It was, seeing that was one of the reasons I fell in love with the Willows. But we are so, I guess, focused on the very near-term things that we have to do and that we have to execute on, that, you know, some things are, are backburnery for now.
Okay. And then contributions. 197, 2021, 142, 2022. What, as a board, what have you guys talked about as, as a goal for 2023?
For contributions? Well, we always hope to do at least as well as we did the year before. But I can't, I can't predict contributions. I mean, we will continue to do the things that we have been doing to raise awareness. Our strategy has been community engagement, making sure the Willows is, is open. You know, take down the chain link fence, open it for events, do all, a variety of programs that potentially appeals to all different constituents and make the Willows relevant to the community. So that's been a strategy, the awareness, and, and we think it's work, we know it works. We've got lots of examples of, of how it works. And I cited one the last time I was here, which is somebody that came to a concert in the spring, saw our decaying, you know, the, the fountain wall, which was in disrepair, and said, "I want to restore that for you." And they funded the restoration of the fountain wall. So we think that creating the awareness and the community engagement works. We're going to continue to do that. At our fall fundraiser, we got a big surprise. A gentleman walked in and said, you know, I, he was an older gentleman and said, you know, "I've been looking at, you know, where am I going to give my money? And I've thought about the Willows, but I really wanted to come and see for myself what you were all about." And he gave us a $10,000 check. So those are just the little encounters and moments that I, I can't necessarily predict. I, I would love for somebody to come in this year and give us a $500,000 check. I don't know if that's going to happen, so we've just got to make sure we can pay the bills and then make sure that we also have our priorities in order for the projects we are going to fund and execute on when those, those funds come in.
Jake, as, as, as part of our, as part of our growth as a young organization, now we have two, three years of data that we're collecting. And so to make predictions and make goals, we're better suited now to look at our numbers. We've always been a very conservative, young nonprofit, and I think rightfully so. So to Krista's point, in terms of contributions, you know, we kind of set that goal as, let's make as much as we did last year.
you know, we kind of set that goal as, let's make as much as we did last year. You know, internally, we're like, let's make as much as possible, but to set that goal. But I think that's, again, what we will continue to do better as a growing organization is to look at our numbers. And now, we have a data set of like, say, three years now, right? Like, good, good numbers that we can, we can build on and grow off of. So, I think each year, we'll have a better handle of, hey, we had 142 this year. Next, you know, next year, we're absolutely going to get to 160, 170, 200.
Okay. And then on events, and I can't recall from the lease, it was 25 events or 25 big events?
But it's very specific. It's 25 major private party events. So, we define major as over 75 people. And private, meaning not open to the public. So, if anybody, Joe Schmo can come, you know, to the event, buy a ticket, that's not a private event. So, it's when a party wants the mansion for their exclusive use. That's, that's private. None of us on the board, you know, somebody asked us a question once, well, can we increase that? None of us on the board want to do that. I'm not volunteering my time to help, you know, for-profit enterprise maximize its profits. I'm here, so, and all of us are, so that we can give this back to the community. So, we don't want to increase that number, but it's 25. Now, that doesn't mean like, for example, somebody rented the mansion. It was an evening in December for a small, private family dinner. I think there were, you know, 40 people. That doesn't count. But, you know, the major events, we are capped at 25, private party events.
But to count it, has to be over 75?
We define it as over 75 people.
Okay.
And those, those events typically only happen in the warm months. So, from April through October, because we don't have a space inside the mansion. It's typically weddings, bar mitzvahs, and everybody wants to be in one space. So, that has, that happens outside. We put up a 40 by 60 tent. So, those large events typically happen from April through October.
And so, if you, if you reach that 25 number, you're saying you guys would not exceed?
Correct.
Okay. How many, how many outdoor event, how many outdoor events playing music occur during the year?
I think we had, you know, not prepared to answer the question, but my son's a part of the Radnor High School Jazz Band, Honors Jazz Band. So, I know they performed. The middle school jazz band's performing. We've had various concerts, wedding parties, they have music. They always have music. We wanted to be responsive to our neighbors and concerns expressed by neighbors. So, we actually modified the space license agreement that we send to parties that want to book a private event at the Willows to make the ending time and the music turnoff time earlier than it was. But, you know, we can't afford not to have good relations with our neighbors. They're, you know, we want to be a good neighbor.
Right. But there's no, there's no cap at how many musical event, like, if you had smaller musical events?
No, no, because we can do any number of public events.
Right. Okay. And how's the relationship with the neighbors since those discussions?
I, you know, Will can speak to that, but I know Will has had a conversation with the homeowners.
Yeah. So, yeah, now that, you know, after, what, a decade, now there's events at the Willows Mansion again. So, anyone that moved into the neighborhood weren't used to, you know, 100-plus weddings a year that the Willows used to host. So, yeah, we've been, we constantly talking with our neighbors. We've written them a letter. We've invited them to engage with us over at the mansion. And we're listening to them. Like Krista said, we lowered the end time from 11 o'clock to 10 o'clock on Saturdays and Fridays, 9 o'clock Sundays through Thursdays. And we're just going to keep that line of communication going and try different things.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And final question, where are we in discussions with the township on the exterior brick wall? Entry, entry and exit into the, into the township, into the park?
The township has, I mean, I don't know if you've seen it recently. I forget when that was. But did, did not do a restoration to those, those entrance and exits. But painted on, they look nice. I think it's, it's a short term. But that is not our
Right.
kind of domain. But we're happy to have those conversations and collaborate and
But I think it would benefit
Absolutely would.
WPP as an organization, just with the aesthetic view, coming in and leaving the park?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a comment I hear a lot.
Yeah.
That wall is run down and needs to be addressed.
It looks, it looks, it looks fine now.
It's better. It's better.
But yeah, we're open to having those conversations in the future.
Okay.
Not only that, but another conversation, planning to see, that we want to have with you in the future is around lighting, because we've gotten a lot of complaints from just even people attending our public events to private parties, that it's pitch black when you leave the mansion and you go down to the parking lot. So, we'll be getting some quotes and expect to see us again, because we want to look at what it'll take to put nice lighting from the mansion down to the parking lot. And I know the parking lot is really a dawn, or the, I'm sorry, the park is a, the Willows Park is a dawn to dusk park. But maybe there's some things that are not obnoxious that we could look at and, you know, lights that could be on temporarily turned off. But those are, that's something we want to explore.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, Commissioner Myers?
Hi. Will, Krista, thanks so much. I have one silly little question. And that is the Peachtree upfront payment on commissions. That $15,000, is that from them to you to hold them as a caterer?
Yeah.
I was just not sure what that is.
So, the agreement that we negotiated with Peachtree, you know, we all had some skin in the game. They pay us 10% of their total sales proceeds. And that, that goes into, you know, what we call program revenue. And they gave us, upon execution of the agreement, they gave us an upfront payment of $25,000, actually. That was essentially a credit on account to be applied towards commissions owed to the Willows Park Preserve. But it was structured, because, you know, we had cash flow issues initially. So, it was structured so that zero could be applied in year one, up to $10,000 in year two, and up to $15,000 in year three. So, they blew past their 10,000, the 10,000 in year two. And there's still 15,000. We don't recognize it as revenue, just like until the event actually happens and we get the commission. Thanks.
And I have just one question, maybe for you, I might be calling in Bill White on this. But I think, Bill, I will start with you. As far as acting in accordance with the lease and your relationship between the township and the Willows Park Preserve, are there any issues that have come up, needed to be discussed? How is, how is the Willows on their execution of lease? And how is the township?
Yes, we have two different folks within the administration that work regularly with the Willows Park Preserve. Dennis, the project manager, works on the contract side. No issues there. And similarly, Tammy, with regular communication and coordinating the events at the park, always talks about a great relationship there as well.
And question goes to you all. As far as partnering with the township in accordance with the lease that we have with you, are there any issues that have come up that are concerning?
I can't say enough about the township staff, really. Dennis, Tammy, Steve, phenomenal to work with.
Excellent. So glad to hear that. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Anything from you, Mr. White?
Yeah. Commissioner Abel brought up the, the walls, the entrance and exit walls. I appreciate the work that Public Works did. Yes, that was always meant to be a stopgap. What we're working on now administratively, if the board will recall, out of the initial 1.8 that was allocated for the property, we've spent all but about $913,000. And we still have the resurfacing of the driveway throughout the park to do as part of our commitment with the 1.8. Engineering was working on those plans now. Before we got too far out over our skis on the money with the resurfacing, we wanted to bring that to the board. And at that time, we would know if there were funds left over from the 1.8 to talk about the entrance and exit. So, that, that's the only reason why those conversations haven't continued. But we certainly plan on it. And as we've discussed, we certainly plan on including the park preserve in those conversations, as well as some of the neighbors who are interested in participating, as Tammy always does when she's talking about improvements to parks. So, that's, that's a quick update on where that's at. I don't have an exact timeline on the roadway, but engineering is working on those estimates now. And as part of that, we could certainly talk about lighting, since we'll be in the area anyway. So, we can coordinate with the Willows Park Preserve on that and bring that to the commissioners as well.
Well, thank you for a good presentation and a great discussion. As always, I really appreciate what you're doing to keep this amazing property viable. And I, having spent many, many years in nonprofit, it can be a slow climb. And, you know, there is no profit. So, put it all back in the house and just make it better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is an update from Michael Baker, try this one again, Michael Baker International. We have Hannah Clark with us today. And she also has a slide deck. So, Ian will help us out here.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Yeah, I guess we, I can. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for inviting Michael Baker to present and update the board. I, I know I've been in front of you multiple times, including, I think, in the fall, after we first kicked off our work, as we were discussing appointment of the steering committee. And obviously, when we interviewed for this contract. So, I know we, we want to bring everyone up to speed and in the know about what is happening. We have three commissioners who sit on our steering committee, which launched in January. And we very much appreciate that level of commitment from the board and also these opportunities to come and brief you and brief the public on where we are. So, I was just going to make this full screen quickly. If I can, yeah, there we go. So, first off, I want to launch the logo and tagline for the comprehensive planning process. This was done in collaboration with the township, with the communications office. And we are really excited about bringing a vision for Radnor 2035 together for our future to the forefront and have it be something that we can all rally around and get out there. And with the support of Molly and Ian, we're going to be launching the social media presence via the township's handles. And we will show you at the end of this presentation, the website as well, which will become a hub for receiving updates and information. So, tonight's presentation will help answer a few questions. And I know these have come up in various forms and as they do, as any planning process gets off the ground. So, just centering, you know, both for the board, but also for the public, what is a comprehensive plan? Who is this team that you hired who's been working with the township since September? What has been done so far? Where is it going? And then, the question to the larger public, but as well to the commissioners, how can I get involved? So, I know we have, we've talked about this, all the commissioners were involved in the RFP for the comprehensive plan. But the foundation of the comprehensive plan comes from the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. It is a required document of all municipalities in Pennsylvania, used to plan over the course of about 10 years. It also really talks about how the different systems of a community work together and support one another. So, future development, housing, land use, transportation, environmental protection are all really core to understanding and planning for within the comprehensive plan timeline. And additionally, we are approaching this as an implementable comprehensive plan, which is a format that has gained a lot of traction from the State Office, Department of Community Economic Development in Pennsylvania, and is really meant to be a realistic and actionable set of recommendations that the community, the township leadership can see themselves in and get behind. So, with the support of the steering committee, who is serving as our sounding board, as our advisors in this process, working with you, working, of course, with the community, which we'll talk about how this is going to launch and really engage folks from all across Radnor, we want to make sure we're putting forward ideas that will be able to gain traction, but also not this pie in this sky. We want this to be measurable and actionable. And that's the basis of this implementable comp plan approach. And so, the current comp plan is very segmented in topics for the township. So, again, we want to bring, make those connections between the different focus areas. And really, that's going to be based in what we hear from the community during the different phases of engagement. So, just very quickly, I know you're all hearing from me. And I, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to get back in front of you. So, this project is led by my firm, Michael Baker International. It's led out of our Philadelphia office. Lydia Grous is our office executive. She's a former 30-plus-year employee manager of SEPTA, so knows your infrastructure well. And there's the infrastructure around the city and the region very well. We're also supported by a team of experts, including Peter Quintanilla, who is leading our placemaking and urban design. He was here for a site tour in the fall, which township staff really helped to inform. And he will be leading, again, I will point this out when we get to the timeline, what's called our visioning workshops. And we'll hear a bit more about that. Brittany Jemlik is our resilience lead. Chris Stanford is a recognized trail and connectivity expert, who is going to bring that expertise. Nick Sisko is doing a lot of the mapping, supported by Bianca and public engagement. Matt Bonner is a mobility specialist. He does a lot of work, again, with SEPTA, with these regional organizations, DBRPC, others. And then, we have our strategic planning advisors, Catherine Rostick and Troy Truax, who have done comp plans across the state in many different communities. We're also working, again, as many of you are aware and have met, Roseanne Lubek, who is a principal at Connect the Dots. Connect the Dots is an innovative engagement firm. They're really about creating immersive, interactive experiences that go to the community and engage voices in different ways. So, we'll be seeing their first collaboration with the plan when we launch the pop-ups in the next few months. And just, this is just giving you a sense, you know, we work across Pennsylvania with all different sizes and scales of communities. We're very familiar with the MPC and all these, all these components and how this will advance your comprehensive plan and ensure that it's based in best practices, obviously, but also our learned experience and expertise. So, big question, what has been done? We had, we kicked off, we had a great kickoff with the township staff, with the three commissioners who had been part of the subcommittee on the selection process in September of last year. And a lot of, in going into that meeting, our team had been reviewing existing plans, thinking about the ordinances, ensuring we had a strong basis to launch into a productive discussion and start to really map out where we wanted to head with this process and what we needed from the township leadership and from staff to make that happen. And what's the, that initial core piece was, was about the steering committee and appointing those folks from your community who would help guide this process. So, what you're seeing here and what has been done, existing conditions analysis has basically wrapped up. Some of that will continue to inform focus groups and surveys, but this was a very initial piece. And then, plan development and adoption will go throughout the entire process. So, again, just building on the existing conditions analysis, we, our data team, Nick Sisko- Sisko, Peter Quintanilla, when we had our site visit in preparation for that, we did a lot of mapping, data analysis of our understanding of different centers and key areas based on businesses, based on infrastructure. And so the site visit helped us understand that in real time and real experience. And the site visit, in terms of informing this existing conditions, also helped us to begin a built environment analysis of the neighborhoods, which, what are the different housing types we're seeing? What is the mix of housing? What is the mix of business and commercial and institution? How big are the lots? You know, things that the comprehensive plan will have something to say about, but it will also then influence future regulatory documents like yours, Zoding, and Saldo, ultimately. We also started our data analysis with census data, with the community profile development, which is continuing on, but we did our initial analysis in the fall. And just for the plan development and adoption, I already mentioned the kickoff. We established a steering committee, I think, coming in front of this board a few times to get your insight and inputs, which we so appreciated. We also had a framing workshop to think about some of the policies and existing approaches within the township that we definitely want to focus on, and what might be things that are not within the purview of the township, or that we don't want to tackle with this plan, and that was through the on-the, off-the-table workshops, which was facilitated by Connect the Dots. We also have bi-weekly check-ins with, previously with Kevin, and with, on Kevin's leave of absence, with Maura, or with Commissioner Mulroney, excuse me, and township manager White. So where is it going? And as you can see, we, what has been done, we were very focused on existing conditions and building that plan, that basis for plan development. What we're adding in now, and what we're really building towards with the launch of the website, but then obviously with engagement opportunities, is the public engagement piece. We also launched the steering committee in January of 2023, and they will be meeting on a monthly basis through June to really get our work, particularly in the engagement space, off the ground, and to really help advise us to make sure we're moving this in the right direction and reaching the folks who we all know we want to hear from, and also being aware of who maybe we're not hearing from, and who really needs to be part of and inform this process. So the steering committee is, we started with our focus group discussion. We will be going into our survey. They will be assisting us with thinking about what we heard from the focus groups, what we hear from the survey, which will ultimately be factors in understanding the visioning workshops and the different areas of the community where we focus, and ultimately how this plan comes together into the framework. So, and then the steering committee, in coordination with our process and plan development, we will take some of the summer to really distill and be drafting, and then go through the draft review process, starting in the fall of this year. Public engagement, we are hitting the ground running soon. I know you, I think everyone here who's not on the steering committee got an email from me with a request about, hey, we are going to be conducting focus groups and wanting to ensure that we have representation from all the wards, you know, geographically within, you know, the different areas of folks we'll be talking with. So thank you so much for your input there. Those will be getting off the ground shortly. And then soon, after discussions with the steering committee and hearing our results from the focus groups, we'll build out the community survey. The community survey will be supported by these pop-up events. There'll be a total of three, and these will be experiential, they'll be kind of intercepted, popping up in either, you know, downtown Wayne and Garrett Hill, in the Willow's Park. I mean, there's so many places that we can, we can go, and we'll be refining those and getting the word out. The other piece about pop-ups is there is some organic component to it. So when we, you know, hey, we're going to be here, you know, if it rains or something, we want to make sure we're being dynamic and flexible. So we'll talk a little bit more about pop-ups in a moment. The urban design and visioning workshop, that's really going to be how do we understand the place and the intersection of place and the policies and recommendations of the comprehensive plan? So we are going with Peter Quintanilla, Nick Sisko, Kathy Rostick, Troy Truax, we'll be thinking about how do you put into the built environment, into the natural environment, the priorities of the comp plan, and apply them to the areas of Radnor? So this is going to be, you know, some reimagining of spaces, but also how do we better connect places? How do we ensure the priorities are being, the priorities of the comprehensive plan are being met? And finally, we will be, when we have the drafts, we'll be facilitating public meetings, which we're terming "community conversations," and that will be how we talk with folks about what is in the plan, have an iterative approach to bringing it forward, hearing what folks have to say. And this will be done through a variety of workshops that we will do throughout the community, and invite them in to review the plan draft and discuss with us, and that, again, will be in the fall. And then just the plan development and adoption timeline, it's, we're starting with priorities, which is where we are now, moving into the vision issues and development objectives, and then there is overlap as we begin to build out the draft plan framework, and ultimately bring the plan for adoption. And we're continuing those connections of bi-weekly check-ins and ensuring that we are staying connected, obviously, with township staff and leadership. So just very briefly, I talked about the site visit, and, sorry, it's cut off here. So one of the things that resulted from the site visit was, as I said, we had a two-day tour of the township. This was in November of last year. We were, we had the opportunity to go around with staff, including Steve, and Bill, and Kevin, and Tammy, and others from the township, to really understand the community through their, the township services perspective. Our team also began to think, again, with that visioning component, how do we layer in priorities such as connectivity? We know Odericio Park is going through its own visioning exercise. How does that connect then into the adjacent community and really create a sense of place, but also create safer streets and calming traffic to be able to safely get to this wonderful resource that we know is very valued and heavily utilized by the community? So this tour really helped to ground our team's understanding as your consultants, but then we'll also, we'll keep referring back to it as we go into the next phases, both in terms of public engagement through the survey and those items, but also through the visioning workshops. I just also want to take a moment to, again, thank the board for your recommendations of, well, thank the board, the commissioners who are serving on the steering committee, but also thanking everyone who made the recommendations, and of course, to the volunteers who have stepped up and are helping to be our strategic advisors and sounding board for this process. So how can I get involved? Well, so as I had been alluding to, we are having, so through our convening of focus groups, we will be building out the community survey, and accompanying the survey launch will be these pop-ups within the community. So this is obviously not a pop-up in Radnor, but it is an example of what could be an experience, a pop-up experience. This was in one of the regional rail stations that our subconsultant, Connect the Dots, facilitated these experiences, and people could have a one-minute interaction where they get asked one question, five-minute interaction where they have five questions, or if they want to really do a deep dive, we'll have enough team members so we can spend that time talking to people. So we're connecting the pop-ups with the survey. We will ensure that we're giving folks a handout, either if they would like a paper survey, we'll have that on hand, but we'll also have little handouts with QR codes to take them to the online survey. But the opportunity to ask some key questions from the survey at these pop-up experiences will help us build out our reach and our perspective. And then we, as I mentioned, we have officially launched the website for the project, A Vision for Radnor 2035. If I can figure out how to get out this. Here we go. So right now, where our webpage is really, we want people to, and I apologize that it's getting cut off. We want folks to have a space to go and learn about what the comprehensive planning process is. So you'll see this familiar graphic that was in the presentation, helping to explain what is a comprehensive plan, and then talking about the planning process, what to expect, and then how to get involved. When you click sign up here, it takes you to the township newsletter signup, because we want to ensure that those are integrated. We have this website to be, in the future, will be built out with interim reports, reports from the focus groups, from the surveys. It will be a resource to follow along the process, and so we want to make sure people are aware of the resource now, bookmark it, make sure that it's something that is in the rotation as we move forward, so people can ensure that they're engaged and we can have a central place for communication. Again, this will be complemented by ensuring there is, you know, that person-to-person outreach, obviously also understanding that not everyone is, you know, wants to be online, so ensuring there are options at other places as well. So thank you for letting me take this time and just give you this update. Obviously, I'm here to answer any questions, go further, and I will bring back up the presentation, so if you have any questions about that.
Thank you very much, Hannah. I really appreciate that. I will open it up for questions from my colleagues. Anyone have any questions on the comp plan, what we saw, or anything about it? Commissioner Farhi?
I was under the impression that there were more than three pop-up events when you presented initially. Am I wrong on that, or is there only three?
There are three.
I mean, I thought it was like seven or eight.
There are three for the community survey piece, and then there will be more for the visioning workshops, and then a third set during the draft plan. So total of nine, I believe.
Again, that's, I'm just...
Yep. No, no, I'll note that and make sure.
I'll let other people ask, and I want to come back.
Yep.
Trying to put some questions together.
And Hannah, do you want to address, just for the community to know, where we're planning to have some of these pop-ups? I know we're kind of in the stages of deciding, but some of the ideas we have.
Yeah, so the pop-ups are likely going to happen in, we're aiming for mid to late April to potentially early May, so it will probably overlap. We are very interested in working with Parks and Rec, with Tammy, to have a pop-up at an Earth Day event, potentially. We also want to be in places that people are naturally passing through in their day-to-day. So maybe it will be at peak commute time at one of the train stations, maybe it will be at a happy hour in Garrett Hill, or, we want to make sure we're hitting the different areas where people are passing through and convening. So there's, and I think to Commissioner Farhi's point about the three, what's great about the pop-up model is we can have three, oop, sorry about that, three planned events, and then we could also potentially help staff or help, you know, have a toolkit if groups want to bring some of the pop-up activities into maybe an existing community meeting or something like that. But they'll, they'll be slightly dynamic, and we're definitely, we're going to bring to the steering committee a more refined list of potential places, but also obviously look for any feedback on our recommendations, just to ensure we're hitting areas where we'll be able to encounter, you know, the diverse community that's here.
Hi. So I have a question, I guess, more about previous, a review of the previous comprehensive plan, and how you plan to engage public about that, the deficiencies of it, priorities going forward, like who has really digested that? Have, has the steering committee all read it? I know I've never read it. I was not on this committee, but I just have a little concern about what we've developed in the past, and how are you using that as a building block to go forward?
Yeah, so our team, what we have done, we've done a deep dive into the comp plan to understand what the recommendations were, what the focus areas were, and bring an awareness as we're moving this process forward and beginning to understand community priorities, particularly in some of the survey and the community meeting spaces. Situating the activities with an awareness of, for example, understanding that some of the overlays, the Wayne overlay, the Garrett Hill overlay, were both in, mentioned in the comp plan as a way to, I think, bring forward some of those shared priorities that were around transportation, around housing, around mixed use in the township. And so we don't, we don't want to discard or leave behind the previous work, but we will be taking a critical lens, and I think adding a layer of, did, you know, I think, using the steering committee to understand, but also, did this happen? If it didn't happen, why did it not happen? And is this a priority moving forward? So we're doing, we have done some of that initial understanding for our, our team, and I think, again, in drafting the survey questions and moving forward as we begin to build out the plan framework, we will continue to refer to what is in the previous comp plan to make sure it's reflective, but also taking that critical eye.
Yeah, I think it's really important to be able to communicate that to the public, too, because they're, one, going to be a little confused about what is all this, and who is Michael Baker, and what's going on, but taking that old plan and really being able to communicate its weaknesses and its strengths, and how you're going to build on it.
Yep. And I think the, because this is a process that happens in communities about every 10 years, there is obviously, there's some wonky kind of policy piece that we want to make, we want to help people understand that this is an opportunity not only to rethink or reexamine the community's priorities, but also, because the comprehensive plan is the basis for aligning zoning and land use and these regulatory components, make sure we're really showing those clear distinctions between the documents, but also how this document informs future decision-making and opportunities as well. So education will be a huge piece of everything that we do, and I think the website will ensure is a good tool, so really welcome any initial feedback there, and how we can make that a resource to help.
Is it up now?
It is, yes.
Oh, okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hannah, thank you very much. Really great to have you here tonight, and appreciate you bringing us all up to speed.
Yep. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I really do appreciate it, and look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Okay, we will move on to item E, which is Resolution 2023-24, authorizing the award of construction contract. B 22009, for the North Wayne Tree Trench Project to A.J. Durek, Inc., to include contingency and construction inspection and administration, and the total amount of $856,758 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. Mr. Norsini, you speak to this?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I would like to start off with one thing, so that, and I apologize for this, the name North Wayne Tree Trench Project probably gives it the wrong connotation. This is truly a stormwater management project that has a tree component. So perhaps the correct name should be North Wayne Stormwater Best Management Practice Project. So the tree trenches are basically areas along the roads that have, and specifically Beech Tree Lane, Oak, Walnut, and Poplar, where there's a stone bed that water can get to from the street, there's also a tree, so we get evap- get to from the street. There's also a tree. So we get evapotranspiration from the tree, we get some storage from the stone bed. So again, my apologies on any misconception of the project. And I should talk about one more thing. So we received six bids, and these are in hundreds of thousands of dollars, 358K through 1.6 million. The, what seemed to be the apparent low bidder at $358,000 was deemed non-responsive for two, two things went against their bid. One was on their financials, and one was in their responsible contractor submission. So the lowest qualified price is A.J. Jurek at $634,636. So when you look at this, if you were to toss out the outliers, the 358,000 and the 1.6 million, took an average of those four, that average is $738,729, which is the market price, right? That's, that's the price, is $6,700,000. So we're here before you tonight to ask you to award the project to A.J. Jurek in the amount of $634,636. That includes, excuse me, a 20% contingency of $126,927, and a inspection services at $95,195, which provides the total of $856,758.
Thanks. Before we get into questions, let me just hear a motion to.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And now open up notes. Opening up for questions from commissioners. I'm going to look to my right first.
Not so much a question, but just sort of some history on the project. We have tried to find a single project that will enable us to take care of the really awful flooding that North Wayne suffers, and we have struggled in order to find it. I'm still trying to push Steve to go with my Scrooge McDuck-style vault idea, where we're going to dig down into Cowan Park and then pump out of it. Thus far, he continues to tell me that that's not a great idea. But someday, someday I will convince him. In the meantime, these sort of small incremental projects where we put in tree trenches are the stopgap that are going to be our best solution while we continue to hunt for the Whale Project that's going to be acceptable to everyone. And also, we just work to revise the existing homes over the period of time as there is development, as there are changes, and people are required to make the updates that they didn't have to make when the houses were built in the first place in the 20s, 30s, 40s. So anyway, thanks very much, Steve. Thanks very much in anticipation to the board. This is a big deal for the people who live there.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have a question. What was the total amount budgeted for this part of the project on the bond?
So it was a.
This was the largest, this was the largest one?
I believe it was 450.
450,000 or?
450,000, correct. So in, in the bond, if you go back to Mr. White and Mr. Tate's presentation for these projects, we are able to pay for this project from the Stormwater Fund. And I, and I thank Commissioner Larkin, and I was remiss in not noting the incremental changes. So this is one of three. Soon before this, board will be a request to go to bid for the North Wayne Field parking lot and the Cowan Park parking lots projects. So these are all these incremental things, which are, which is sound stormwater management as part of the, what may be a big project someday.
So this was originally going to be, this was originally slated, the money was originally slated to come from the bond, am I correct in that? And then that was moved to the Stormwater, or this fund, or this is always going to be funded by the Stormwater Fund?
So I, I look at them as one in the same, right? The bond funds the Stormwater Fund, which funds these projects, right? The bond was solely for the Stormwater Management Projects.
Okay, I just, so it's twice, so it was budgeted for 450, and it's 856. So just curious, so it's twice the amount of what it was budgeted for? Am I correct on that?
So the 450, I believe, was construction only. You're looking at a price of construction, contingency, and inspection. And we had agreed to pay, or the board had agreed to pay for the smaller projects right from the fund. So you could spend 500 directly from the fund, and the balance of whatever, $300,000 from the bond. But there is, we have the finances to do this.
Okay, so out the door, it's 856?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, any other, I mean, there could be additional costs associated with it once you get in there?
So this is North Wayne, and that's, that's a struggle all the time, but that's what the 20% contingency is about. Like, if we were working in Newtown Square, Beau Prey, that contingency would be much lower, right? It would be 10 or 15%, but it's 20% because of the location.
All right. It's just hard for me to, for me to wrap my head around that. It was 400, then it seems doubled, and then on top of that, there's a 20% contingency. I understand what you're saying, but.
So it's not on top of, so the, the 856, 758 includes $634,636 for construction, $126,927 for contingency, if we use it, right? That's just part of the budget. We may not use that. And again, flat fee, we use a flat percentage for inspections, which is $95,195. That may, that may very well not fully be utilized. We're giving you what we feel is worst-case scenario for a budget from the project. So the 450 would actually be pushing six if I added those things in when I gave you that budget number.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Now looking to my left.
I have one quick one, if it's okay. And the public, the people that will be getting these tree trenches are going to be well aware, and their sidewalks are going to be dug up.
Right, exactly. And we're going to be replacing the sidewalk and any curb, and those trees are going to go in the right-of-way. So the township's policy for many years has been to maintain trees in the right-of-way, so we will also maintain those trees.
So I have a couple of questions, just about, this is my first tree trench. Are we removing trees and adding better trees that do a better job at sort of helping with stormwater management? Is it brand-new trees?
So Commissioner, that's a great question, which I should have addressed in my briefing. So there are no trees removed as part of this project, and that was, that was specific to where we placed these. And so zero trees will be removed. 41 trees, in accordance with our shade tree ordinance, will be replanted. And for those 41 trees, we went right to John Hospack to help us, well, he actually chose all the species of trees, because some are near utility lines, some are more wide open. So we relied on his expertise, which is vast, to pick these 41 new trees to the area. So stormwater management best practice that has a tree component, great thing, the township gets 41 more trees.
I like the sound of that. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners, comments? Is there any public comment on this item?
Always welcome your comments. Mr. Givens?
Hi, James Brenmar. I just wanted to oppose this. I don't think that it's worth the money. If you look at the ordinance, it says it's going to be temporary, or, what's the ordinance? I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it says like limited storage or temporary storage. If we have a flooding event, I would imagine it's going to flood no matter what in that area. So it's really not going to do anything. I understand with other management, storm management systems, it might work, but that would end up being too expensive to get to that point. Like Steve said, the low bid was 300-some thousand. If you're going to pass it, I would try to find a way to get back to that company. It's a company that the township uses all the time, and we could save ourselves $500,000. So spending 500 more, I think is a really big waste of money for the taxpayers. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public? Not seeing any. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. This has passed. And I will move to our final business agenda item, which is Resolution 2023-30, revising the 2023 consolidated fee schedule, establishing an outdoor dining fee in the amount of $150, and a late fee in the amount of $70 for calendar year 2023. Mr. Norsini, is this you?
Thank you, Commissioner, yes. So if, if one was to look at the, one were to look at the fee schedule as adopted, there was a lot of items that were changed in com dev fee schedule. There was a very big list redlined out. This specific one was inadvertently removed, so we're just requesting the board reinstate it. And the solicitor noted that we can amend the ordinance via resolution. He created the resolution to put this back into our fee schedule. And I would work with Mr. Tate to have this posted appropriately if the board approves this.
Okay, we have four questions. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Norsini?
Is this going to pose a risk because we're amending this late, that somebody's going to be late with their funds, and then, because we didn't give them the fee early enough, essentially?
I don't anticipate that, Commissioner. The, the letters went out a little later than usual. So I, I think we have some leniency. If, if everybody gets them back in a reasonable amount of time, it shouldn't be an issue. This would apply for the folks that more or less don't pay right away, you know, drag this on. So I don't anticipate a problem.
My only question is that this is the exact same fee level from prior years, or is there any increase?
This is the exact same fee level, Commissioner.
What's the reason why are we charging? Is there an administrative cost that this is going to, or is there an inspection cost that this is going to? I mean, what's?
So there is an administrative cost for, for all the properties with outdoor dining, as well as, so that's for existing ones, as well as processing new applications that come through. No different than any other permit or that we provide.
Any other questions? Any comments from the community? I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. Passed unanimously, and that ends our business agenda for the evening. I will move on to reports of board liaisons. Does anybody have anything to report from our boards and commissions? Okay, seeing none, I will open for new business. Nothing there? Old business?
Madam President, if, if we could.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like, if the board will allow us, I'd like to present, or present the deer call, an overview of the deer calling program. Representatives from the police department who oversee that program are here tonight. We've had, you know, we had some concerns raised, and honestly, it's been a little while since we've briefed the board on this, so it's, it's probably healthy to have a review of what the program entails, why we do it, and how it's been successful. So I would like to turn it over to these gentlemen to take just a couple of minutes and step through it, if they would.
Can we, can we ask Ian to put the PowerPoint up, please, Mr. White?
Guys?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Bill Gallagher, for those of you who don't know me. Lieutenant Pino and I started running this thing a long time ago.
2012. Prior to that, we were asked to come up with a plan that.
Sergeant, so that you both have a mic? Okay. Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
I apologize, of course.
I'm fine, thank you.
But yes, I'm embarrassed that I said that.
No, please don't be. So prior to 2012, we were asked to come up with a plan to address the growing concern over deer collisions, deer defoliation, the Lyme disease issue, and the overall nuisance of the deer. Without getting too into it, it was a learning curve to find out what we could actually do from our original plans and suggestions, to find out that would have been totally illegal, and we all would have went to jail, to hiring companies that weren't allowed to do it, to finally filing, finding the USDA. What happened in, then we found out that we had 101 deer per square mile. Normal residential community should somewhere be around 12 to 15 deer, deer per square mile. Radnor, because it does have large open spaces, could probably comfortably fit between 18 to 22 deer per square mile. So we were off and running. We had to get private properties, township properties, we had to get support from local hunters to, and the township to support conventional hunting. All of those things we did, we had great support from the community, all the large properties in the township, private properties in the township, tiny little properties in the township that were concerned about their specific trees, all wanted to get on board. That's when Billy and I had to go out and unfortunately tell some people, hey, we can't, we can't use your house on North Wayne Avenue in the backyard under your swing set because it's eating your wife's rose bushes. So the point is, is there was a lot of thought and effort that went into these properties. We had a wonderful first year, and because of that, we've, we've been able to keep it going, keep it running, and keep it growing. The only hiccup we had along the way is we switched private deer, deer archery groups, which is a, was a no-brainer for us. It didn't slow us down at all. We'll go through the numbers. I'll let Billy talk about some of the things on the PowerPoint.
As you can see, we started in 2012. The estimated number of deer in the township at that time was 1,394. What we do is we do a survey. The USDA took like a Google shot of Radnor, and they had no idea where deer were. As a matter of fact, they had us going up Conestoga Road through Garrett Hill as part of the survey. So we had places where there were deer, places where we knew we'd never see deer, by Brimmore Hospital, you're not going to see any deer. But it came out that we had 144 deer per square mile when we started. And as you can see, when we started to cull, 2013, it went down. The number of deer culled is underneath that, and then the private hunters are underneath that. And of course, with all the deer, we had 44 hit by cars at that time, and 41 other calls. So that's 85 police calls involving deer just in that year. And as you see, as it goes up to 22, you can look at our numbers, and that's after the pandemic, which two years, we didn't even go out. So it kind of rose a little bit, but then we went out, we did the job. We had 15 nights. You can see when it was real low, we were doing eight to 10 nights.
Just real quick, some clarification. The 2012 number is when we started the, the surveys, that we didn't actually start culling to 2013. So that's why that, that chart doesn't look.
Correct.
Completed as proper.
Yep. And then you see the density in 2012, 101, 13, 62, and this is deer per square mile, 14, 43, 5. 2015, we got it. We, we were right where we wanted to be. Went up a hair in 2016, 2017, relatively the same, and then 2018, we finally made our goal. We got our goal at 14, and then the pandemic hits. So started to go back up again. You can see 2020, it's 47, and 2022, it's 37. 30 incidents. If you look at 2012, 84 killed by vehicles, 67 other incidents. Now, the other incidents are the ones that you don't want to see. That's the deer on the fence. That's the deer just got hit by a car and, you know, is. That's the deer just got hit by a car and, you know, is limping in somebody's backyard, and they find it, you know, deceased. And obviously, you see that they go down and down and down and down. The costs, just did this real quick. Insurance costs, we're saying a deer strike, the claim back in 2018 was $3,800. It's probably a whole lot more than that now. So those deer strikes in 2011, at those prices, $234,000. Then you go up to 2022, $62,000. That's what the program's done so far. It's just a car that got hit on the road in Radnor. Since the winter of 2012, the USDA Wildlife Services have removed 1,882 deer from the township. Private hunters, 192 deer. Private hunters haven't been doing as much, or basically as well, because it's no longer shooting fish in a barrel. Just is what it is. The deer density dropped, as you see, from 101 to 37 in 2022. The killed by vehicles been reduced from 84 in 2012 to 15 at the end of 2022. Police responses reduced from 151 calls in 2012 to 31 through the end of 2022. And probably the thing we're most proud of is that every deer that's been removed from Radnor Township was transported to an approved processor, packaged, and donated for charitable food distribution. Total of 59,480 pounds of venison has been donated by the township since the program began. And now I know you want to definitely hear about the safety factors, and I want to let Lieutenant Pino tell you about that.
So in the history of the USDA Wildlife Services, which is 25 years that they've been doing deer calling, they have not had one safety-related incident in the history of their doing this program. And I am proud to say that we continue that with our 12 or so years issues. And quite frankly, Commissioners, we've had minimal complaints. I mean, I, most of the time, in the early days, I did a lot of work with the guys, I was out with them overnight. They would call and call about a suspicious white truck with a spotlight. We would clear it out, tell them it was a deer calling, and that was the end of it. Biggest complaint we get is that we don't advertise, we don't tell the people we're doing it. That came as a requirement from the USDA. Experience has taught them that if, if you give people the opportunity to tell them when they're going to be out there, people are going to want to come and see it, those people who are supportive of it, and those people who are not going to support of it. So it's best to do it in private as best as we can. The township agreed to that, and that has been our policy since then. We have taken steps to some of our community members, and we will call them, say, on Monday and say, hey, just want to give you a heads up, we'll be out this week. We won't tell them when, we don't tell them what days. We'll tell them it'll probably be two nights this week, and then we'll go out, and they'll do what they have to do. The Wildlife Services operates under the principle, they call SHE, which stands for Safe, Humane, and Effective. That's where they credit their 25 years of no issues. They are professional wildlife biologists, and they're also trained sharpshooters. Every day before they go out for a shoot, they're required to take the rifle and qualify with the rifle at a target that's probably a little bigger than the size of a dice, and they have to hit it five consecutive times at a certain distance, and don't quote me on the distance, I don't know what it is. They always are shooting from an elevated position because they're in the back of a truck, plus the properties that we look for, we look for areas where we can find more of an eleva, where we can get a better advantage with the elevation or backdrop. That's where the baiting and Billy and his crew comes in. We go out, we put corn out, and we bring the deer in, and we put the deer in a spot exactly where we want them to be. And I think it's important to know, because I know one of the complaints, this is not hunting, and I know some of you Commissioners do hunt, and maybe some of you don't. This is not a fair sport, like we call hunting. This is, this is done for a need, to meet the needs of the community and the township and the safety of the township. And therefore, we are exempt from some of the conventional hunting rules. We are allowed to use the spotlights, we are allowed to bait. They use what they call a FLIR, a Forward Looking Infrared Lighting System, which is actually, shows heat signature. So you look through, looks like a, if you ever watched a war movie or your kids play video games, you can actually see everything that gives off heat. You can tell the exact shape and movement of whatever's at several hundreds of yards out. So there's no, there's no instance where we're going to shoot a horse and think it was a deer, or we're going to shoot a dog, or God forbid, even put a scope on a human being. It's just, it doesn't happen. I mean, I can't. The FLIR, they do use a suppressed rifle, but unfortunately, the movies have killed us with silencers. Everyone thinks it's a silencer, so when the gun goes off, nobody's hearing it. That is not true. They use the best technology that's out there. It does minimize the sound, it does make it quieter. Believe it or not, you're actually quieter if you're downrange than if you're behind it. We know that because we sit in the truck underneath them when they're shooting over us, and it's much louder in there than it would be behind, or even behind than it would be further in front of them. They use what's called frangible ammunition, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds if this is boring everybody, but the frangible ammunition is basically, it eviscerates on impact. It doesn't go, it doesn't, there's no through and through rods. Whatever hits, it disintegrates and it stops, it delivers all the force into the target, and there's no through and through. And, you know, and the other comment that was made is that while there's not a lot of deer in certain areas of the township, or there's not a lot of collisions in certain areas of township, deer are considered the most adaptive wild animal in the country, let alone the Commonwealth. If they find an area that they can go to and be, they don't need a lot, they'll go there. So it is important to, in my opinion, to give this benefit to the entire community, and if the need exists, I think we've more than shown that we've been capable of doing it. We're doing everything good we possibly can with an unpleasant subject, and we hope with your permission, we can continue doing so. I don't know if you have any other questions, we'd be glad to answer them as best we can.
Thank you so much to both of you for a lot of really good information. I think we probably do have some questions. I'm just, I just have one, and it's just to clarify. You talked about sharpshooters and private hunters. So are those two different bodies, and the private hunters overseen by the USDA Wildlife Services, or is it, I guess, where do the private hunters fall?
Okay, so it's, it's a bit of a convoluted answer, and I apologize. To get this permit, the township has to support private hunting, which falls under all the regulation guidelines of the DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and the Game Commission in Pennsylvania. So what we do is, so the short answer is no, the USDA does not admire them. We do. So the group that comes into us, they will send me a copy of their letters, they'll copy of their hunting license, we sign them the areas that they're allowed to go, and those hunters are strictly archers. Yeah, they're not allowed to use the rifles. These are archers. I think you'd be hard-pressed following game commission rules to find anywhere in Radnor Township, just because of distances requirements, that a hunter could use a high-powered rifle. Maybe on the farm, but I don't know. But so, we regulate them, we monitor them, we vet them, and they go where we tell them to go, when they go. They do not have access to the areas that we have. In fact, there's only, there's three designated parcels that belong to the township that we let them use. What we do do is if there is a resident that has a big enough parcel that could allow conventional game commission hunting, we will put the two in contact with each other, and they can work it out together. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. I'm sure we've got folks with others. I'm going to, Anna Marie Jones?
So you mentioned that some use bow and arrow? That would be the guys that you're hiring?
No, I'm sorry, ma'am. The private hunting, we, the gentleman's name is Alan Strickler, and he has a hunting club. Ironically, Alan Strickler, for those of you may remember, now, he works both for the state and the county picking up road-killed deer. He also has a hunting club. They are archers. They only use archers. The game commission uses the same rifle every night. It is, I guess technically is a high, it's not a high-powered rifle, but it is a rifle round, and they are the only shooters.
USDA.
USDA, I'm sorry, the USDA. The game commission's not involved, I apologize.
I'm not, you know, for one or another, but like, which one is more humane, in your opinion?
Ma'am, humanely, the high-powered rifle and these sharpshooters is, I can't lie to you and say it's pleasant, but it is the most instantaneous humane way to get things done. Yes.
Other comments from Commissioners?
I have a couple of questions, yeah. An arrow, the amateur.
I'm sorry, just, I was starting on my left, and then I'll move to you. Commissioner Abel or Riley, any questions?
Yeah, it's not a question. I was briefed on this program five years ago by the previous manager, and I was, I was under the impression that in my area, really only one park was utilized, and that was the Willows. So I was surprised to find out that some of the smaller parks are used, and parks in, really surrounded in residential neighborhoods. Appreciate all the information and the safety that is put into this program. I just, the risk of doing this inside of a pocket neighborhood where in the past we know has been used after hours, if at all possible, I would just prefer some parks not be used. Understand the program. I, you know, I hope you'd still be able to be, participate in the program and be able to exclude some parks. I just don't think, you know, parks surrounded by, on all sides by residential homes is one warranted for, for use of this program.
Commissioner, we, the one thing I want to stress is, first of all, acknowledge Lieutenant Pino and Supervisor Bill Gallagher. One of the things to add to that safety, Commissioner Abel, because I really respect it, and we take this so seriously, because really, if there's a problem, it's going to come down on us. I do want to let the Commissioners know, either Bill Gallagher, Primary, or Joe Pino is in a vehicle, and we are monitoring what's going on with the technologies. I'm not trying to talk you out of your concerns. With the technology, I would call us to have at least a triple check, and there's many times that no action is taken, or if we think anything is wrong, and we stay in communication with it. So I would say that we would not be doing this, or we wouldn't have recommended it in 2012 with the program, and I'm not sure how the communication went for your situation, but those parks, especially up in Wayne, are very important to us because we have less area that is open space. Those parks are generally of the larger size. We don't use any pocket parks, or immediately small. So it is essential, and part of the purpose of the permit is they hold the township accountable. So in other words, if they give us these special privileges with these specialists from the USDA, we have to commit into making it safer for everybody. So with that being, we do need, we do need those parks, what I would call is real estate to keep on top of this. And the more we continue, the less activity there will be, in theory, as long as the other townships keep up on it, such as Lower Marion, Tridifern, they all have programs. We've noticed a change in some of our deer senses when they stop. But I did want to address this kind of triple check for the FLIR, our lights, the knowledge of these officers is irreplaceable. So all those things come into safety. I just wanted to recommit to you on that.
And in no way are my comments meant to say that you guys aren't putting forth the utmost amount of safety and concern and running the program the right way. You know, and hopefully nothing ever happens, but there is risk involved, and, you know, I would, I would be more comfortable if that program was utilized in parks, not in those close neighborhood situations.
I think I understand the park you're talking about. And that park, we drove by there the other night when the phone call came or whatever, and there was seven deer laying right in right field, in the, on the baseball field. There were seven deer. We pulled in. The guy lit it up with the spotlight, turned the spotlight off, because we know, because we've gotten a complaint from the same person a couple of years ago. Took the shot. That was over for that one. Took another shot, and a gentleman came out with a spotlight. Just came out towards us in the truck. I called the police, just so everybody's safe. But it was at 2:30 in the morning. There was nothing in that park except for seven deer.
But that's not always the case. You know, there are people in that park after hours. Not that that, not that that's right. Not that that's right.
Can I?
Thank you, yes. Commissioner Farkey?
Yeah, I'm all for the program. Just a couple of quick questions. USDA, do they check for deer wasting disease before the food is?
We were fortunate enough, sir, because we, we were so successful in the numbers of deer we got, that one of our guys actually got his biology certificate from the USDA because of all the deer that are in it, that we took from him, and all the crazy things we've seen. And it probably wouldn't be appropriate here, but I'll be glad to talk to you off record. But yes, they do test. They also ironically test for COVID, and I will say that COVID had been significantly in the deer found in Lower Marion. Now, we haven't got our test back yet, but if it's that close, I wouldn't doubt that there's COVID in our deer.
That's just a general, I mean, deer wasting disease is similar to mad cow, so obviously, if you don't get any deer wasting disease, then the cull is effective, and hopefully these, hopefully there's a cause and effect between a high population of deer wasting disease.
Correct.
And then the next question is a part two question. Is there a particular month that the township culls, like deer hunting season, what's that, like November, December, or something? Is there, is there like a deer culling season, or is that like a year-round, hey, whenever we can get them?
We try to base it on our studies. Our studies go in the fall because we want to make sure that fawning has occurred, so we're getting a more accurate count on the number of deer. So...
So you're doing this in fall, is that?
The study is done in the fall.
Okay.
And then the, the nights will be selected. We like to do them earlier than later, but we've ran into some issues with weather. So it typically runs between late January up to March. That's mostly out of concerns for weather.
Okay.
And then we'll do another study at the end to see where we're at.
So to that, to my point, if you could, and I'm not saying, look, we're going to be in Clumcrone Tuesday at 2:30. I get that, like, you'll have people saying, don't shoot the deer. I get that. But to at least advertise, from January 1st to May, or to March 31st, there may be deer calls in these parks, it's a wide enough window that I think addresses the issue of if someone does hear, like, because if I heard, if I heard a gunshot in the middle of the night, like, I'd be, I wouldn't say a word, that I would have been very scared.
No, sure.
So that's, the only thing is to give at least some acknowledgement, and a very wide window, I think, could alleviate
So what we...
A lot of the fears, and I'm not saying it's got to be a specific day.
No, I totally understand your question. So my, my first instinct is to say with respect, sir, that the USDA would never go for something even that broad. What, and I want to reiterate, what we have done is there's a wonderful, wonderful elderly couple that lives on the corner of Roberts, and I won't tell you the other one, because I probably shouldn't do that. And they're not good sleepers, so they just need to know when we're going to come. So I will personally call them on Monday and say, sir, we're going to be out there this week, we'll be out there two nights. And what we would do in any situation, if someone has come to us and has presented an overwhelming concern, we would call them specifically, personally, and say, hey, we will be out there this week. I would certainly be willing to go to the USDA and ask them, but my concern is, sir, is they will probably, that may actually be a deal breaker for them. I can't speak for them, I'm just telling you what my opinion is, sir.
You could ask, I mean, the worst they'll say is no, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And then you'll still be able to call.
Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, I think it is worth...
Absolutely.
I think it's worth that ask. I know that I... I know that I would, I don't, obviously not speaking for the board, I know that I would and the resident that, I think we all know who we're talking about approaching me, I think that would be at least some kind of common ground or middle. Yeah, I'm for the program. I called in like a month ago or two months ago. More your ward, what is it, Yorkshire and Eithon? There's a deer impaled on the, that was me that called that in. Wild Haven and Eithon? There's a deer impaled on that fence, and I called it in. I'm like, oh my God, so.
Well, we're happy to say we have a couple of new properties down in that area, so we, hopefully, we can address the area better this year.
Yeah, I mean, it's good work, and, you know, you guys, you guys don't miss, so I'm not worried about, I mean, I'm always, safety's always in the back of your mind. I think that if there's a little bit better communication, I think a lot of this could go away, and it doesn't have to be great, just a little bit more, I think, would satisfy a lot of the needs.
Totally understood.
That's what I got. Thanks.
Any other questions? I have one last question. I know that you have permission from some private property owners to use their land. I was wondering if somebody felt that they had land that would be a viable option, should they reach out to you?
Please call myself directly, or Billy Gallagher directly. All it requires is they sign a form. A lot of times, we get questions about liability. We actually have a form that shows that there's absolutely no liability on the part of the landowner. And again, we would have to go out there, and some people say, oh, I have 10 acres, why can't you do it? Well, because it's flat as a pancake, and there's no place that, just don't be surprised if we have to tell them no.
No, that's fine. I just, I'm sure you're always looking for different places where the deer are hanging out, and if we have residents who know that it's part of their property and might be willing to help with this really sort of very incredible program, specifically.
You are welcome at my house.
The donation of meat.
I'll open a window.
The donation of meat of this, the amount that you put up on the screen is mind-boggling. So although, as an animal lover, it's a little hard to hear about these types of things, I think some people might agree with you.
I'm not a hunter.
I know, but, you know, I mean, when you get something good out of something that's perhaps a little distasteful, you know, I'd like to thank you for being creative in, you know, looking down the road and seeing what we could do to have a beneficial outcome. So thank you for that. Thank you for this really very informative presentation. I understand why residents who might hear a sound in the night and didn't know what it was would be very, very upset by it. So I also encourage the public, if you have these questions, I'm grateful that we have so many people who are going to be transparent and open and answer all the questions.
I have one more question. So this is a bit off-topic, but how are the rabid animals being addressed? So I know that there was a, was it a fox? Yeah.
That was actually at The Willows. We got a call for a fox acting strange, and if anybody's watching that sees an animal that's acting strange, because there is rabies around, there's no question about it. And The Willows, you know, skunk hollowed a trail, that's scary when you get them there, but we've had a couple there recently. And what we do is we take them up to the health department up in Lionville, and they'll let us know, and then we notify Delaware County Health. Chief Lanigan has me put out an alert, which pretty much goes all over the place, because I get a lot of calls about it.
A sick, injured, or dangerous animal falls under a whole other category. We have had the opportunity while doing the call, we have removed at least one coyote, and we have removed several sick foxes. Now, to be fair, those animals go to the USDA, and they're guys, and they test it. But when the civilians call, residents call, we handle it the way Billy said.
Yeah, of course. Just thought of a quick one, this is back to the deer again. Do the hunters that are the archers, are they hunting during the day?
Yes. Gaming laws are, they actually set the specific sunrise time and sunset time. You get a digest, it tells you exactly when you can be in the woods.
Thank you all very much for this. It allows us to be able to answer concerns of the residents easier. Nice to see you, Billy. Okay, that was under old business. I'm going to make another call for any other old business before asking if there is any public participation at this time.
The woman who was here from Michael Baker, I wish that she were still here. I was the co-chair of the Implementation Committee for the 2003 Plan that I served on, and the 2008 Plan. And there is a chart that Steve Palantonio and I made of all the suggestions that were in the 2003 Plan, and whether they had been, in fact, implemented or not. Now, since Steve died a few years ago, I haven't worked on it since, but at any rate, that would be, I hope, helpful to them. So I'm throwing it out there. Okay?
Thank you. I'm going to find that chart. Absolutely.
I don't think anybody else has it. Steve and I made it up, so.
Do you have an old copy?
Do you have a copy? Yeah.
Yeah, I have a copy.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate you staying around to tell us that. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor say aye. Good night, thank you very much.